Lynn, get your mic. Lynn, get your mic.
We'd like to welcome you to our city council work session. It's five thirty on May third. We're gonna dispense with a roll call tonight because everybody's here. And I would like to ask if somebody would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I will.
Please stand.
Or Jason can.
Please repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask if someone has a thought they would like to give or if they would like to offer an invocation.
Mayor, I've got a thought.
Okay.
We all have circumstances we can't control, but we also all have something else that's even more important. Deep down, we all have hopes and aspirations. We have principles and values that matter to us. It's that kind of thing that makes a raft different from driftwood. The raft has a destination. Our desire and hope for a better life, a better future can prevail against the wind and waves and carry us forward. Yes, our past does to a large degree shape us, but we shape our future. We can choose who we want to become.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We wanna move right along tonight. Mr. Garrett Seeley, we want you to come forward. I know that you've already presented two or three plans. Have you only got one copy? Well, I guess we have it up here. I've had two or three discussions with our staff as this process has gone along. So tonight, what you're doing is presenting this to the council for the first look.
Okay.
Before we even take it on to the planning and zoning. That's what I understand at this point.
Well, yeah, so Garrett's worked on a couple of different iterations of a development that could work on this property. He's come back and forth with staff and the mayor and gotten some feedback. We feel like this is to a point where the council can provide some of the feedback they have. Really, the next step here is what they're showing that they wanna do does not comply with the development agreement or the zoning. And so there would need to be an amendment to the development agreement which would change the zoning accordingly so that whatever he wants to do can work. Obviously, there's negotiation that would happen with the city council and that's some of the direction we're hoping to get from you today. Obviously, this is a work meeting, so there's no action, but it's really giving some feedback to Mr. Seeley and helping staff to understand what the next step is moving forward. If it's close enough, then we can start drafting an amendment to the development agreement. If there's still some work to be done, then Mr. Seeley can take that and use that to go back to the drawing board, so.
Garrett, as you present this, would you please note also, and Jason, if you could jump in at the same time, note any differences between the current zoning and any change that would have to incur that would be part of it, okay?
Absolutely. So first off, thank you for having me here. I do appreciate you making time for me to work with you on a work session. I do wanna let you know how much I appreciate working with Jason and your staff. They do a great job and have done a good job with me, and so I do appreciate them. So, as many of you know, this is the Erkenbrack property, which is on the west side of town as you head out on Highway six. Mr. Erkenbrack is gonna retain his building and the five acres around that. And then we have already purchased the nineteen and a half acres that is outlined with the bubble plan or the plan that's before you. In this zone, there are, and Jason, help me out, there are multiple zoning districts, correct? There's three of them. Tell me which ones they are again.
So primarily what he has in the yellow is in the RC zone. And then what he has in the blue and this brighter red is primarily in what's currently the Main Street Commercial Zone, MSC Zone. And I guess that's really the two main ones. The existing building that's there is in that new commercial light manufacturing zone which was created six months ago or so. So there's really three zones that are there. And what he has would probably need to shift that zoning around and maybe even change some of the zoning. And we can talk a little bit more about that.
Perfect. And so just to give you a quick layout, that red area would be noted for kinda like a service station. Right now, it's about an acre in size. There have been some plans or some discussion about increasing the size of that, especially for larger vehicles as they go out and play, especially to the sand dunes and different things. And that can be easily accommodated because you can elongate either way to make that all happen. So we can get that up to an acre and a half or whatever the size is necessary for that to happen.
When you say a service station, you mean more like a convenience store?
A convenience store with gas. That's correct.
Something similar to the Maverick, is that it?
Correct. Yep, that's very, and we have been in maybe, well, preliminary conversations with this. A C store that likes the area, thinks it's a little green, but is willing to look at it at least, which is good. So, and then the blue that you see there are what we call an office warehouse. So it's a warehouse that has offices up front that you could do like a gymnastics center or a tile center, plumber, whatever it may be that they could use those. Those will line Highway six and then line around that light industrial building or the Erkenbrack building that is still there. And then the rest of those yellow units are two and three-story townhouses that will be in the residential portion of that. So your connectivity, you'll have a main entrance coming off of Highway six. You'll have connectivity going on Fifth West to the north and also, or excuse me, yeah, to the north. And then on the south side, you will have one that will go out towards the church to the east. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. It's pretty basic, pretty straightforward. We have done some preliminary investigation. We can sewer. We've already got a letter from UDOT to be able to sewer to the west to hit the trunk line within their right-of-way. It's at the base of that, of the downslope, so we have twenty-foot easement already secured so we can make this all happen. And then water, there's a sewer line there and then water obviously internal.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
The connection there on the south side of the east part of your property where the housing units are and that road goes to the east.
Yes.
That is not all dedicated city street and it's not connected all the way over.
Correct.
So do you have a plan for that or are you leaving that up to us to figure it out?
Well, last time I met with city staff, they said that they would be willing to talk to that property owner and see if they will dedicate that portion of their road to the city so that that road can continue to go east.
Has that, has that discussion ever happened?
That discussion came up several times during the recreation center proposal for that site. And we just haven't executed in going out and talking to that property owner. I know that there is some city clearing of streets and things like that, and I know that the expenses on that property owner for what really is a public street to take care of it, maintain it and all that type of thing. And for him to dedicate that would take that off of him as a responsibility and it really would provide a lot of connectivity. It made sense back in two thousand sixteen, eighteen. And as far as city staff and their future, it makes sense for connectivity purposes to work with that property owner and have that come in.
Questions for Garrett?
Well, I also would like to go through what does not fit with the current development agreement and zoning in that area compared to this proposal.
Yeah, and primarily, and I already pulled up the zoning map. You can see here, that's the current property. The back portion of it is RC. And then the building itself is this CLM or commercial light manufacturing. And then there's MSC that's along the frontage of Highway six, and I know that was the city's desire was to have commercial along that frontage. When Mr. Seeley first contacted the city, one of his things that he really wanted to do was try and to find a way to use this portion over here. The road here starts to separate from the grade so it can get over the railroad tracks. And so having a Main Street commercial type of product there was something that was hard for him to wrap his mind around. There was a time where he showed a lot more multifamily in this area. And as we talked, it really kinda came out that there was this warehouse commercial type product that he's got experience doing and which I think the city would be open-minded to because it is commercial along the frontage, but you know, it's something that would have maybe a retail component to it, but also maybe fits a little bit with some of the light manufacturing that's still there on the site and probably would remain.
And there is a lot of demand for that. We do have a lot of contractors that are here locally that work and need a shop and have retail components. And so it seemed to be a a commercial type use that would still be beneficial to the residents of Santaquin as opposed to straight identity.
So primarily the difference, to answer your question, is just these zone boundaries would just need to be shifted around. You know, right now, if you kinda toggle back and forth between these two, you can see that there's some of this warehouse commercial that's a little bit around the building and, you know, up here. So it's, the boundaries of these zones would not fit exactly the layout that he's laid down, which he sees would work for him. I should say that there's not been a thorough review of this plan. This is like, you know, hundred thousand foot level just looking down and trying to orient land uses around on this property. So we haven't gone into a lot of detail with parking or street wits or infrastructure or things like that. So really, at this point, it's just saying, does this general concept work? If it does, then we can dive a little bit deeper and draft an amendment to that development agreement to really adjust the zoning boundaries. And then beyond that, we can, you know, obviously there'll be further negotiation with any other details that are in that development agreement or which Mr. Seeley would like to have. But again, this is just a very high-level look and it's really broad direction right now that we're looking for from the council.
Are the blue or the commercial buildings that you show there, they're not the kind with residential above. They're just commercial building, warehouse, office complexes that would be expected at that level.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
What was the name of the website?
Next Step Warehouse.
Single story?
Single story. They'll be a little bit taller because on the warehouse side of it, you'll have, you know, go up to probably thirteen feet, maybe fourteen feet tall, and then you'll have a little, you know, buffer on top of that. Something similar to what you're seeing there.
We can encourage businesses to move into these, and then you'll just lease them out? Is that the intent?
Lease them or sell them as individual condominiumized warehouses.
So they'll each have their own property description that goes with it?
Yep. That's exactly right.
And for the townhomes, does the density fit within the maximum outlined in the development agreement?
So he's indicated on the right side there, he's indicated some of the the numbers, what he feels like could be allowed and what he's proposing. Again, we have not done a thorough review of this. The development agreement doesn't necessarily allot a number of units. There's a maximum of units per acre for the different areas. If you remember, we had these these little bubble areas or we called them pods. And those were very general pod areas that had, you know, I think the most was twenty units per acre. So that doesn't really give us a good idea of the total number of units because after streets and parking and different things like that come into play, it's really putting those things to see the maximum number of the units they can get in that given area. So these are the numbers that he's given. Again, not a thorough review that we've done, but you know, just the eye test. It looks like it's something that probably is pretty close.
So also keeping in mind, the development agreement does require them to meet city standards for parking, open space,
Right.
materials, all of the normal stuff that we see with that. They're still under all of those obligations to meet those requirements as of, I think, November, October of last year, if I remember correctly, which they haven't changed much since then. So again, we would have to look at all of the parking, all of the open space, all the landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. It could be that they may not even be able to get one sixty-six. This is just a concept plan at this point in time.
And for the convenience store, is that, is the access to that directly off of Highway six?
No.
No.
Okay, that's what I thought by looking at the picture. So to get access to that, traffic would have to go in through the neighborhood.
No, so what you're not seeing there is he's only shown half of the street. He's anticipating that Mr. Erkenbrack, who still owns this building, would share in the cost of building that full width street. So there would be a street that would come off of Highway six and the access to the convenience store would be off of that road that takes you off of Highway six. So this, it shows just a little sliver right here, but really that would be a city street, a public street that would connect from point A.
So we have an agreement with Erkenbrack to build the full road.
It will be there eventually. There will be direct access off of Highway six.
Correct.
Well, if the agreement is approved between you and Mr. Erkenbrack.
So I have the agreement with Erkenbrack to, he'll dedicate half of his road. We'll do our half. We'll build the entire road. That road will connect to Highway six. The service station will not have direct access off of Highway six.
But the road that the service station is on has direct access to Highway six, even though it's not showing.
We don't want it to go through the neighborhoods.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yep, I understand what you're saying.
So you're saying that you're going to change the size of that, which really you ought to with the amount of traffic at least three to four days of every week that go out past that?
Right.
With trailers and RVs and everything else. The ability to move those around really ought to be taken into consideration and getting back out on that road and moving.
Right.
So you may even wanna make a turn lane to make it even faster because most of those people are gonna be heading west.
Okay. The nice thing, the way that, that kinda L shape, if you will, sits is that you can push a lot of the longer trailers off to one side so they have their access and then keep the cars on the other side. So alls we do is elongate the one side of it to accommodate for those trailer and turnaround.
Yeah. I like, I like the commercial that you brought into this all the way around. From what the original plans were, we've gone a long ways with this and I think it's answered a lot of the questions. One thing I wanna ask the council, are there any other things that stick out or things that you would like to see from this? Because it does fall under two things, that MSC and the RC zones. Can't tell you which one is most unpopular to me.
I just have a comment basically about the parking. Because lately, everything that we've done here, the parking tends to turn, seems to be an issue. Now, with the conditions of the, with what the economy is, you're finding that the apartments that we have right here, that you got either two or three bedroom and there's, they're leasing those out and renting those. So now, instead of two cars per unit, now you've got six cars per unit. And that's just the nature of the beast, I think. Now, I'm not saying that we gotta put the parking on this development, but the question is, is where does these extra cars, 'cause you know they're gonna do the same thing in your development. So the question is, is where does all these extra cars go?
If I may, so we're running to the same, exact same question that we've had in Spanish Fork. We're doing a large development across the street from the Revere Health off the Benjamin exit. Directly to the north there, we are doing another large thirty-five acre project that's six hundred units, all rental. That's not a rental. This isn't a rental, but that is. But it's the same concept, right? If you have a three-bedroom, the likelihood of having three cars to that is pretty high. So we did a study and I'm more than happy to do this here. We'll meet the parking requirement because all these units will have a two-car garage and we'll make sure that in the CCNRs that they cannot use that two-car garage as a storage unit, that they actually have to park in the two-car garage. And then there's enough guest parking throughout to accommodate what is needed for city standards. And then the other thing that we do is on public streets, we like to outline one side of the street to see how many extra cars you can actually get on that public street that is off-site parking, but you can't calculate it as part of my calculation, but you can see what it can handle as parking. Because these are all gonna be built to city standards, those streets.
And maybe for Mr. Seeley's purposes, a two-car garage, in order for it to count for two parking stalls, it's gotta be twenty-four by twenty-four.
Correct.
I know that's a little bit bigger than what a lot of developers are used to, but it's something the council a few years ago made a change.
Which we've made sure that these fit that designation, so.
Then you will have your own enforcer for the CCNRs?
Yes, this will be in an HOA.
So if we start getting complaints, okay.
Yes.
So I take it that that one little green space down there is your place, the only, yeah, right there is your only green space for?
There's green space throughout. Again, conceptually, we just put this together so we can get in front of you and we're obviously gonna have to work with staff to make sure it works the right way. But yeah, most of the units are on that west side, so we wanted to have that green space kinda tucked away a little bit. And we wanna have another green space on the east side and we can shift those units around to make that all happen.
There is a requirement, I think it's for every eight units or so, he needs to have a tot lot. So there will be, you know, it may not be a wide-open park space like maybe this one here, but he'll have to find ways to utilize some of that extra common space for meeting some of those requirements like the tot lot or other amenities.
We also like to add like a dog park. Those are becoming very popular and so there are amenities that we like to add.
Are all of these rear-loaded?
They are.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, so there's alleys down the back with the garages and then you have the, you're showing something that we've done in the past. So they would look like this facing the street.
And meeting our material requirements. Those don't necessarily meet our material requirements for those zones.
This is a product up in Bluffdale that Mr. Seeley indicated he's done before in which he indicated to us that he's wanting to replicate here on the site in Santaquin, so.
I'd like to revisit the accessibility there for the convenience store.
Yes, sir.
The front of the store is showing parking immediately to the, at the store and then, you know, on the other side of parking lot right there. If cars are parked there, I'm really concerned about this design being adequate accessibility for somebody that's got a twenty-five or thirty-foot fifth wheel. I don't know where the pumps are gonna be, but I don't see somebody with a large trailer, you know, RV getting in and out.
So what we were talking about is extending that island, that service island, to the west. So it would elongate, so you would lose a couple of those units, but it would elongate that service area and so they would have a wide area to turn around in.
Would they also, would they also be able to access out? I guess you don't want them going through residential.
We don't want them go through residential.
Okay, it's just, it's, it, it looks tight.
One of the things council member Adcock that you could do or ask for is to have them show you turning movements for large vehicles. They can do that right on the, right on a separate sheet where they've got it shown and they can show you all those tracking movements and how vehicles can move. We do that similarly with things like garbage trucks or delivery vehicles that we know are gonna be coming to a Macy's or something like that. And so that would be something we could ask for.
It's easier to fix now on paper than it is after it's built.
Absolutely. I agree with you.
I think when you present it again, just have them make a little AV file that they can throw in there. You can automate a semi or a truck and trailer going through it quite easily. I think that would prove it.
Okay.
Well, I would like to make sure if this continues down the line that we get an accurate representation of the units per acre. Because the development agreement was two years in the making and before that development agreement, there was no maximum units per acre. So that was something that was really important to the council when this was passed was that we, we had a maximum units per acre. So I wanna make sure that that is addressed.
Well, and this will, this will work well because if you remember when we were negotiating with Mr. Erkenbrack, it was meant to be broad and not a specific on purpose. And that was why, and that was because Mr. Erkenbrack really wanted some flexibility of what he could do with the property. But now that we have a developer who's got a specific plan, it'll be a lot easier to tailor the development agreement to include those specific numbers. So instead of those, you know, pod areas that were very general in what the density was in that general area, we'll be able to pinpoint exactly what's there. And we can compare it to those pod areas, but we'll be able to be a lot more specific so that the development agreement is crystal clear.
Could I just add, what was the number of commercial office or warehouse spaces?
The actual number themselves or?
Yeah.
I think I have the square footage if I'm not, I have forty thousand square feet. I could count them very quickly if you like.
I, I just thought you might have a number that you'd already worked on.
So eight, one, two, three, four, five, six. You got forty-eight, fifty, somewhere in that?
Just that one side, never mind, yeah.
Is that right? Sorry, I was just doing it quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know what? It's a very good commercial addition. And encouragement to get them filled and everything else is one of those things we really wanna work on anyway.
Something different that you don't have down here.
Yes, and needed.
If in the future that road became four-lane going west, how would that impact your development?
That's a million-dollar question. We'll have to pay for it. It would impact it dramatically just because of the slope. So, yep. Or go.
I don't think it'll happen in my lifetime, but I think it'll happen.
I think it will too, but the nice thing is, you know, they own property on the south side of the street there and it's farm ground on the south side and then the city owns the former sewage plant. So I think, if anything, it'll get pushed to the south rather than the north.
Just something in the back of your mind.
Sure. Understandable.
Was there consideration for single-family units here, homes? I was just looking at that piece on the east down there, that section on the, behind the building.
The, the east?
Yeah, on the, on the east side there, yeah.
I just, it's further off of Highway six. It just, to me, if there were single-family homes there, maybe it would be, I don't know. I know that doesn't make as much money, but.
Well, the hard part is the economics, as you just indicated, what we had to buy this for from Mr. Erkenbrack was not inexpensive by any means. I'm trying to make it all work with the different uses and give the city the best product that I can get. I have been in contact with the neighbor east of that east piece. Wyoming and they just don't know what they're gonna do with it. And it's three and a half acres. And if you could get that to go with it, then yes, it makes total sense to do some sort of small residential there. Correct.
Make it nice.
So I'll keep pursuing them. I don't, I'm not holding my breath because I think there's a lot of indecision right now in that, in that family.
And I think.
Oh, I was just gonna ask if there are any other questions, but go ahead, Jason.
I was gonna say, and I think when we had negotiations with Mr. Erkenbrack, you know, the whole property was zoned RC. And what needs to be understood is Mr. Erkenbrack could have done one hundred percent multifamily in the RC zone. Negotiating and have some of that MSC and the CLM and some of that ensured that we were gonna have some commercial component as part of this development. Obviously, we've helped Mr. Seeley understand that desire from the city. But, you know, while we'd like to see a different type of residential, it's a little bit better than what the original zoning was. And I think part of the reason why that RC zoning worked there even before any of us showed up was because there's not necessarily a lot of single-family neighborhood. You got the, is that Rocky Mountain Power there?
The single-family is to the north off of Fifth West.
Right. And you do have some single-family that's along the back, along Lark Lane, but this is off of a Main Street or Highway six. So poses that question of, you know, a single-family, does, is it work well to have it on a? A single family does, is, is it work well to have it on a, on a, a little higher speed road, Highway Six or, so. Yeah, it's, it's, it's something that, that we have certainly talked about with Mr. Erkenbrack and now with Mr. Seeley, but again. With the, the, the base zoning that was there, uh, all along the RC zone, we've been able to negotiate and at least get commercial as part of it, rather than just having a one hundred percent multifamily.
Well, don't get me wrong, I love the commercial part, but needed, we, and that's beautiful, that's what we want there, commercial businesses. Um, I just, maybe a possibility of duplexes instead of a townhouse.
You know, and I don't know how, I mean, this is the first time that Jason or staff has heard of this, but. I was approached by a, they're, in Phoenix right now, the new greatest and latest thing to do is to do a single family detached for rent. And what they do is they go in and they'll take this entire area, but they'll do a single family homes. And they'll, they won't plow them, they'll own the entire thing, but they're all single family homes and they rent them out. And it's, it's booming in Arizona or across the nation now, it's starting to kinda, but it, the birthplace was Arizona.
Smaller homes?
They're smaller homes, they're still three bedroom, they can even go down to a two bedroom, but they do nice amenities, they're catered towards, um. Young single mothers, they're catered towards people that wanna have lock and go. Uh, kinda like a fifty-five and older, but it's not a fifty-five and older designation, I mean, they can have kids and different things. But it's a lifestyle choice and more and more that's becoming more prevalent, especially today. But that has, they, they're all rentals, one hundred percent.
Are not going to be rentals.
These will be for sale.
So will there be any provision in the CCNRs that if someone purchase it, purchases it to use as a rental?
I cannot put that in legally, no.
Okay. So someone could purchase them and then rent them out.
One hundred percent.
But.
So they could turn into rentals.
That's exactly, I'm not saying that that's what our intention is, we're here to sell them, but if somebody came in and bought one and wanted to rent it. That is their prerogative to do so.
I'm just curious on the Phoenix thing, how big a lots are they doing with that?
So they don't break them up into lots, so again, they would own the entire property as one site plan.
Yeah.
And then each of these homes are in there with walking paths and parking and different things.
Not a lot of yard, just.
There's actually quite a bit of yard, because they condense it into a major amenity area, so you'll have a clubhouse and a pool and. It's just a different look of things, so. I'm happy to say, throw together a plan real quick and I'm happy to show that to you as well.
The action that we needed to take, well, really, we were not gonna take an action, we were just gonna discuss this, uh. The next move is gonna take is going to have to present something to, uh.
Well, I, I guess not necessarily action, but maybe some direction for Mr. Seeley and or staff. Uh, is this close enough that you want us to start working on a draft, uh, amendment to the development agreement, or? Is there more, more work that he needs to do to get it to where you're comfortable with, with having those ni- uh, negotiations with the development agreement amendment? That's the general direction we're looking for.
This, this was built or proposed in that residential commercial and Main Street commercial, which really gives so much. Automation into, uh, development for residential and, and to be able to get. Possibly forty commercial sites out of this is quite aggressive and good, I think that's a good thing and a great way to go. Uh, I think, you know, the council needs to say, if, if you feel any different, I, I certainly would make the. Gas station a little bigger.
Fair enough.
Yeah. So if you went with those smaller, single family rental plans. Would that, um, eliminate the commercial or would you, you would keep this commercial?
Stay.
Okay.
Yep, that's, that's not an issue there, it's just, you know, you're trading townhomes for single family detached rentals. Uh, your density would probably go down, this is, I believe, at how many units per acre? I think overall, it's like ten units to the acre with the commercial, I think that would go down to probably seven or eight. So you would, you would lose density just because of the space that you can't. You're not going up, right?
Yeah.
You're going up.
So the feeling is, how, well, how do you feel about where we're at here, is there more that you wanna direct? Are there any changes you would like to make, cause in the past, we've, we've reviewed this a couple of times to cut it to where we are right now. Do you wanna go further, are there recommendations that you think we could give Garrett and, uh, see what we could do?
Are you, Mr. Mayor, are you saying that you and staff have reviewed it a couple of times?
When it came back first, it was pretty much all residential, or at least that's what I remember.
The first time that I'm seeing a plan.
Yeah, it's, it's just concept that he's been bringing to work with our staff.
Right.
And our staff, since I'm in the office, we, we've gone over it and all I've done to this point is say. We need to see this commercial and I'm seeing a tremendous change with commercial.
There, there's been three or four iterations and each time, there's probably been a little bit more commercial each time, and so that's been, been one of the things we've emphasized. Is, is the, you know, the city and the council's desire to have more commercial, particularly along Highway Six.
Which is great, and that's typical too, for a few iterations before it comes to us, I just. Mayor had already mentioned that this is the first time that the council's seeing it, so I just wanted to.
Just concerned about the size of the service station, I think it just needs to.
Be larger.
Spread out a little bit, yeah.
Noted, okay.
The area's gonna grow, there's gonna be more traffic, not less.
Fair enough.
So, are we on the right track, any ideas we wanna pass on to him?
I'm just still interested in this, this whole Phoenix idea, I, I know that, I, it's, it's intriguing because. The company owns the property and keeps it, so the rentals are taken care of by you.
One hundred percent.
So it's not like some guy comes in, buys one, rents it out, doesn't take care of it, you're taking care of the rentals.
That's exactly right.
The, I do like the idea of these being bought, they're, they're, so people own them, but the fact remains several of them. Who knows what percentage will end up rentals anyway, possibly not being taken care of.
Yep.
If you own them, they're taken care of and we're catering, hopefully, we have to look at. Load, or, um, low income housing, will they be rentals that people can afford or? Guarantee that, depends on the market, I get that.
Dove in a, in a, a low income housing, I mean, that's not. But these would be market rate, uh, rentals, yep.
But there's, I don't know, I, I'm just still curious about that whole concept, and I don't know if this is the place to do that, but. I think we oughta research that more.
Well, what I would recommend, if I may, Mayor, Mayor is, is that can be interchanged, right? Throughout, i- if this is the plan that is something that you like with the commercial, the general layout. That's what we're trying to do so we can move forward with the amendment to the, the Erkenbrack agreement. And if that's true, I can still research and still come back to you and say, okay, this is what it's gonna look like if it does go that route. But the commercial's not gonna change, that's gonna stay there.
I don't know about the rest of the council, I'm interested in seeing that.
See it.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's a good idea because it goes in, in line with some of that, uh, that we're going through for, uh, the justifications for.
Yeah.
Low income.
I think, I think, you know, I, I tell people a lot that I'm not a proponent for one type of housing, um, in, in my professional capacity. I, I think a diversity of housing types is good, we have townhomes that are owner occupied, um. But this, this is a, a new product type that's not really, you know, prevalent, I mean, anybody can rent out their home and there's, there's homes that are being rented out right now, but to have a. A, um, uh, you know, a centralized area of just single family home rentals, um, granted, they'll be probably pretty. Pretty dense, maybe, I'd guess probably s- you know, seven to eight thousand square feet, something like that.
Dance too.
They, these are, but, but, uh, this would probably be something like you see in Foothill, but they would be a common area. You know, rented out type of a deal, I mean, and that's, that's a product type we don't really have and, and that's, that's, I think you bring up a good point, that's intriguing. Because it's a diverse.
How it's gonna look like, maybe the Phoenix area, plus the, the idea that they take care of them is, is really appealing, most rentals, you, you just don't know.
Well, and I.
Taking care of these.
I think in this example, and maybe Garrett can correct me if I'm wrong, but the majority of that green that you see in there is gonna be common space anyways, which they'll take care of. So it's not necessarily that he's not going to take care of this.
Well, I mean, the individual home, they're his rentals, he's gonna take care of the, the rental home, these homes are gonna be owned, you don't know what's gonna happen in there.
Right.
They're gonna know what's happening inside a rental.
Right, but usually with townhomes, just the unit itself is owned.
Yes.
The yard and everything else is common space, which is taken care of by the HOA, so.
So, um, the description, if I may, in this home builder magazine of Phoenix's, one of Phoenix's projects. Um, Hancock's Homes, which is the builder for this particular one, come in one or two bedroom layouts ranging from six hundred and thirty-five to twelve hundred and fifty square feet. Um, they're designed with the same high level of architectural details found in for sale homes and come with private backyards. Here's a higher level, I don't know if you can see that very well, but, um, just to show like the neighborhood. I kinda would like to see what that would look like to compare.
So just to give you Hancock Homes, which was kinda the innovator in Phoenix, was recently just purchased by Toe Brothers. So, to give you an idea, Toe Brothers is high, high end, right, that's kinda their niche that they like to be in. They liked them as, that much because of that very purpose, so.
It does say that they're filled with high tech.
They are, that they're super nice.
So.
So, it's just a different product type, like you said.
If the commercial is staying, uh, except making the gas station property a little bit bigger, I, I would like to see.
Yeah, I'm not sure where I sit on that, but I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, but I would like to see a proposal to, um, or like a concept like this to compare the two.
So if I can reiterate, you'd like me to move forward with getting a draft going. With this layout, with the commercial in place, but on top of that, we would like to see a concept plan with the single family detached for rent product. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think just to reiterate to Mr. Seeley, we've heard concerns about green space and the parking for the. For the units, right, the, the streets, the, the, uh. C store, those types of things, we really like the commercial, so I would just say, a- am I missing anything that we've talked about, I would just say, take all of those things back and. Go do what you're gonna do back with it and then come back and continue to work with staff so that we can bring something back to the council that they can consider.
Yeah, let's make sure that we know when you come back again, uh, percentages for green space and everything else.
I'll make sure that I have all that on there.
Now, these aren't showing unless they're, unless they, they are also rear loaded, these are not showing garages.
Uh, these are, uh, those usually don't have garages, so they'll be all surface parked.
So that would be an issue here, wi- cause we don't allow any winter on-street parking.
Unless it's a parking lot.
And then it's pri- and then it's privately plowed.
Yeah.
But, well.
They have to plow.
It's like a large apartment complex, they have to plow their own or a church.
So the only city street is gonna be the one going off of Highway Six and then back to Lark Lane?
Uh, no, cause you're gonna have to have frontage on to the commercial side, so you, anything that fronts the commercial will have a city street as well.
Will be city, so that will have to be plowed.
On, on this map or on this layout that he has, uh, the majority of everything you see that would be a city street, except for the obvious parking areas. And then you can see these narrow alleys, uh, for, for getting access to the back of the garage, but those work because the units all have frontage on a public street. So this would be a public street, this would be a public street, all this would be a public street, down here, this would be a public street that comes through here.
Okay.
Just not these really narrow ones that are on the back sides where they access the garage, those would be, uh, their private access, but.
And they would have to plow those.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Okay, well, I think it will be interesting to explore.
Perfect.
Are you good?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Appreciate you coming.
Thanks, Steph.
Like to move on to the next thing and that's the regular council meeting agenda, uh, we need to discuss a few items as we get ready for this. Like, um, on the public forum, um, there was a couple of things that I missed, but. They've asked for a public forum and so I'm gonna put them first right now, one will be Sarah Jorgensen. Uh, and she is going to talk about the arts, uh.
Festival.
Festival that they're already underway with and that they'll hold the final thing on Saturday. And then, uh, Betsy has the youth city council. And, uh, they will do, uh, aren't you going to do a presentation?
Yes.
With that? Okay, and then anybody that signs up for the public forum will go over. Uh, any questions as we go down through the thing, my wife is gonna come in and do, uh, the volunteer of the month. Read the information and I have the stuff up here. Actually, we'll do the volunteer of the month before we do the public forum, okay? And then, uh, business licenses you, and, and the building permits, you just have a year standard on that. Resolution, do you want to discuss that resolution, Norm or Ben, do you wanna go over that?
It's just the budget one?
Is that what that one is, the resolution improvement, yeah, the tentative budget?
Um, so I, uh, we've been really working to modify the, the budgeting tool that we've used historically, the spreadsheet. Um, a lot of automation has been added that had a lot of, um, issues with it and we've been fixing it and getting it so that it's, uh, all the formulas are correct. But there are, uh, some tweaks that have been outlined by some of the council members who have reached out since the tentative budget has been sent out. It's just important to recognize at this point that the budget is tentative, it's in its tentative form, um, it is required to be passed by state code, but. Um, this next six week period is the time to make tweaks and to, uh, you know, add a little bit of money here, remove some money there and, and work it through. And that's based on your input and based on the public input into next year's, um, financial standing. Um, are there any questions that you have, I'll go through a presentation during the regular meeting. Um, just talking about what the highlights are, but are there things that jumped out at you that you had questions on that I can help answer right off the bat?
Well, I already went through my list with you, so.
But Betsy handed, sent an email of probably twenty.
Twenty-three, twenty-four questions.
Questions and we went through a lot of them and, and, and some of them are errors that we need to correct, and so I appreciate that. Um, some of them are just explanations, um, I, I think what you'll see, one of, one of the, a couple of the big things that you'll see in the budget is that. Uh, John Bradley with Community Services really has worked to create buckets of events, you know, all events fall under one bucket instead of. Um, taking Orchard Days and having, you know, ten different events within Orchard Days from the rodeo to, uh, the piano con- you know. Program or whatever, it's all under, uh, one event and, um, so doing a lot of consolidations there, so you'll see a lot of hundred percent increases and decreases. Throughout that, and the other big change that you probably see is with Public Works, um, Jason has done a really good job getting in. Really involved into the budget, studying it out and working to ensure that he's adequately allocating his resources. To the actual work that they're performing, so if you take a given employee, uh, maybe they're spending thirty percent of their time in water and twenty percent on sewer and. Ten percent on streets, we went through and, or hit, actually Jason and Shannon went through and allocated every single employee, so you'll see some salary. Departments going up and others going down, it's really to reflect actuals and get it more accuracy to the overall financials. Um, but other than going over the high level items in, in the regular meeting. I'm happy to answer any other questions or turn the time back to you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, any questions on the taxes? You've had a lot of time to read all the way through it, you've just hours and hours. Really what we need to do is over the next month, really scrub this out because we've got to approve it tentatively tonight per state code. And we know that there's gonna be a lot of changes, there's some discussion and we've gotta possibly move some money around, the one thing I really wanna make sure is. That we have the revenue coming in to cover what we need to go out. The other thing, I wanna make sure that we've got a good handle on our public safety needs. Both fire and, and police and where we stand, y- and our public works, you know, with, with all of their needs too. And, uh, let's just scrub down through it, everybody's got their responsibilities, it should shine through, so. We've just gotta start working on it now, see what needs to be cut, fixed or re-appropriated or however we. We've just gotta start working on it now, see what needs to be cut, fixed or re-appropriated or however we do this, okay?
And we would really, really appreciate if you could take that, instead of waiting till the very end of that six week period, if you could take the next week or two. To really focus in, set up an appointment, come and meet with Shannon and I and we'll go through line by line and answer any questions, make any tweaks or changes. Uh while I'm physically still here, uh that would be very helpful, thank you.
So we've got two weeks with Ben, so uh let's utilize every minute that we can. And then we've got about a year and a half with Ben after that, that he will be on call twenty-four seven, no problem. And we'll utilize that and and it's free, that's the best part. Okay, any other questions, we just need to get to work on it, the next one is resolution. Um we sent that resolution out for the approval of uh the employment agreement if that is approved tonight. And I say if because it has to be presented and you have to make a a motion to do this and uh. But there are a couple of line items on that that we need to approve this. But waiting waiting for the uh attorney to make a couple of changes that are on it.
So Brett Brett just recommended a couple of clarifications, very minor, so when you do approve it, um we would just ask that you do it, subject to attorney or uh review.
Okay, uh and then uh number seven is a resolution for approving the appointment of. Uh the dispatch district board, the one that uh Ben had been serving on and we were gonna move ahead with that one. As we had talked about, unless you had, do you have any questions on that? So we know what we're discussing there and we'll we'll just explain it as we get into the council meeting and we can go through it, okay? Uh the discussion on possible action on Vista West preliminary subdivision, that's at ninety-five lot. And it's the one up and to the south or to the south from where Summit Creek or Summit Ridge Drive. Makes the top of the hill.
Vista Ridge?
Vista Ridge Drive and Crest Dilling.
Yeah, so uh is there a uh map that you're gonna be able to hold or hand out tonight?
It's it's in there.
Does anybody have any questions on that, you're aware, they've been working on this forever, it seems like.
There are lots of maps in the packet.
I I know that Planning Commission really went over it last week and they had some concern uh concerns about and they had some valid questions about it.
Yeah, just as a clarification, this is a preliminary plan that's already been approved, but they're doing a couple modifications to it. Which which can were considered major changes, which meant they had to come back and get the preliminary plan approved again. So there's like three lots that that moved and had to change their size a little bit. Uh one of the biggest changes in this is they had a retention basin in the in the development, but they're proposing that retention basin not just be. You know, big boulders or rocks that 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 lay the 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 bottom of that basin, but they're they're proposing to kind of landscape it. Make it like a neighborhood park, so um we we generally don't dive into landscaping until final. But any any comments or feedback you'd have there would would be great as well, but it's it's really something that has been approved by the city before. With just some changes that were considered major, which meant that it needed to come back.
Okay, so everybody will look at every one of those changes and then we'll give any input the input that we need at that point, okay? Uh contract two for the Summit Ridge Booster Pump Station, the pipeline install, is it ready to start?
Uh yeah, they're they're ready to start as soon as we can approve this uh GMP tonight, GMP number two for the project. The the tank is nearly complete and they're just getting ready to start filling and testing that. Uh but the booster pump station and the install of the pipeline, you may remember last fall, we bought the pipeline to save nearly a million dollars, as it were, at that point in time. We appreciate the the CMGC process and the contractor working with us on that. We're now to the point where the where the booster pump station is completely designed, we're ready to to order pumps and block for the building and et cetera. And and we present that to you for your for your sustain uh for your vote and we have the funding that we need to be able to do this. We're we're currently within our funding allocation that we have for the the bond and the budget set aside for this, so. We would uh just look to get that approved and and cut the contractor loose tomorrow to go start ordering pumps and motors and that kinda thing.
That gets us on the uh schedule for the first of August or something like that?
Uh but so there's a little bit of a delay on some of the materials, we're gonna be pushing it to get actual pumping water this year for the irrigation season, but it will be. In fact, that's a good point, the 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 final completion date is actually April of next year because. We need to give them that little bit of time to to be able to order the pumps and the motors and the the biggest drop right now is the electrical parts, the big boxes that you see that. All the switch gear and all the motors and everything go in, all the motor drivers are are quite a ways out as far as timing goes. We're gonna try and get it online this year, but the reality of it is, there could be a possibility that it's gonna be next spring before we have the pumping station going. Now, keeping in mind also that the 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 biggest problem that we've had with Summit Ridge has been the storage, so we now have four times as much storage. This year as we did last year, so that's gonna help us out, it will still be using for the most part culinary water for at least until the pipelines in. And then we'll be able to to serve a portion of the lower end of Summit Ridge with the actual uh PI water. But for now, we're gonna be all culinary, at least for the first few months of the irrigation season, uh as they've had it before, but. Um just just having the storage is gonna be a huge boon for us this year.
Okay, there's uh just a couple of other things, that's uh Raptac dollar, Raptax dollars, I guess the Raptax Board met. And uh they wanted to put some money towards the the mountain bike park, which was pretty good. And John is gonna be here tonight, he he will go over that, he was at the meeting, I believe he'll be doing that presentation. Is it different than that, any of you know, and that goes right into the next one, wait a minute, the potential for the Utah County Parks Grant.
Yeah, that's the parks grant that's for that comes from the county on a yearly basis, that's an allocation of just the six, almost six thousand dollar funds that we have from the county. And we have to put that into our parks, you know, and to to uh up upgrade our parks essentially.
And that's, that can offset any of the other costs that we have on any of the parks right now.
It can, we do have to identify what we're gonna do with it and so that's in his memo, if you wanna take a look at that and and uh just make sure that you're okay with that consideration.
The only restriction is it has to be a physical asset, meaning tied or structurally tied, it can't be a piece of equipment or personnel.
And and he is also, we received another grant today for the mountain bike park. And uh it is substantial and uh I just thought we'd have John bring that up at the same time. So he's gonna be kind of out in the open for a few minutes. And then lastly, he has a re- uh request to go for training into uh Arizona. He's also going to be a presenter, he's been the past president of the uh of the State Recreational Association and so. Uh I think it's a good note for John because he's well accepted into the community. That he works in is as well, uh this is a good move for us to moving along, he's he's done some great things for us and. The amount of money, I I'm not gonna tell you, I'm gonna let him do it, but because I was excited when I said, I didn't even wanna answer him straight back. I kept thinking, no, so this is good, okay? Uh we'll do our reports, I do want you art to talk about or to bring up the the um. Secondary water refund that you had talked about. And we have a whole plan that we'll talk about, Norm will just answer it, if you just bring that up, we can roll from there. Uh everybody has a regular report that they want to give, Dennis is not gonna be with us tonight, okay? Uh is there anything that he had that one of you are going to pick up? And then uh I do want to go into an executive session tonight. And the executive session will be called to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation. And or purchase, exchange or lease of real property, the line item that it falls under, okay? So we will excuse from that and then we can go back in and close the meeting when we're done. Hopefully, they can move along rather fast and what I'm really trying to do is make sure that you as a council. Are very well aware of everything that we're facing and everything that we're trying to deal with, okay? Anything else, anything? Appreciate you all being here tonight, uh can I have a motion to adjourn this work session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor? Eyes above the nose, it's closed.